I know. No, I didn't.
Here.
I'm so sorry. Yeah. I forgot. I didn't bring my daytime on. Oh. As it slides down.
Thank you.
Get to me this.
Madam Chair, I am scheduled to get my booster at six. So if I sneak out at ten till, I'm just.
Okay. Hopefully, we'll be good. Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. Glad to see all of you here today. This is the City Council Oversight Committee for Thursday, December ninth, 2021. We have three items on the agenda today. Discussion regarding the Center City Form-Based Code Ordinance and reestablishment of the Center City Form-Based Code Ad-Hoc Committee. Discussion regarding the potential purchase of a van for the proposed Mobile Crisis Response Unit and the staff report on homeless activity. This is a packed agenda today with some pretty content-rich staff reports. I want to remind everybody that we have a hard stop at six because the Planning Commission follows right behind us. And I would also like to request, if possible, for the staff that are doing reports, if we could let them get through the entire report. I don't know if you all had a chance to review the quite lengthy and in-depth staff report by Ms. Hudson. So I think we might be better serving our time if we can hold questions to the end. So with that, the first item on the agenda is discussion regarding the Center City Form-Based Code Ordinance and reestablishment of the Center City Form-Based Code Ad-Hoc Committee. Just a little bit of background. This has actually been something that is a carryover topic for two years now from the City Council. And we're trying to catch up on many of the things that we've had to put on a little bit of a pause. So we're going to pick it up. And Ms. Hudson, if you're ready, go right ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Jane Hudson, Planning Director. So as you said, I won't go through these slides. This is the discussion about the Center City Form-Based Code. I know we have some people that are familiar with the Center City Form-Based Code area, but just a brief reminder. So this is the study area. Ultimately, as we go through this, remember that the campus corner area was removed from the actual Center City Form-Based Code, but it was part of that study area. So the Center City Form-Based Code, it's a regulating plan. It provides a public space master plan on the development parameters for each parcel, and it shows how each lot should relate to the street space and the surrounding neighborhood. As well as, within that regulating plan, you'll see the building form standards on the next slide, and I'll go over those. Those require buildings to have windows, welcoming entries, and that contribute to the connection with the life on the sidewalk. They require the placement of the parking in the rear of the buildings to ensure that it doesn't get between the buildings and the pedestrians. I know in this area, many people are familiar with when you're walking down the sidewalk and when the cars were parking in the front on the driveways, they would block the sidewalk and so we wouldn't have that free access of the sidewalk there. So the parking does go in the rear on these new developments. This is the regulating plan. I just briefly outlined. You've got the red, which is the urban storefront. That's what you're going to see on Main Street, the more intense areas. The orange is the urban general. Along James Garner, there on Eiffel, there's also an orange hatched area, which is down here at the bottom of the regulating plan, and it's closer to where the president's house, the OU president's house is located. Then there's the blue, which you can see the blue. It's kind of centrally located within the plan, and that is the townhouse small apartment. In the 2019 amendments that we made, this pink area was added. It was previously blue, which was, again, the townhouse. And then we added the pink back in, which is the neighborhood middle, which is one of the things that the community really felt like we were still missing. And so they wanted to bring that option back into the updated plan. And then the yellow is just as it says. It's the detached frontage. It's the residential area there on the west side of the plan itself. So the history of the Form-Based Code is, you know, we did a joint MOU with the University of Oklahoma in January of 2014. The council approved the contract in February of 14. And from that point on, March of 14, two years of meetings. You know, they had the charrette, May of 14. Then they had the charrette summary that was on the website in 14. And then they continued for two more years with public meetings, discussions of how this area should be developed. And then it concluded before council in May of 17. Previously, we had the plan for two years. And in January of 2019, council adopted a six-month temporary administrative delay for this area. It did have the option for applicants to appeal straight to City Council to ask if it was okay if they went ahead and submitted the application to go ahead and start the review process. As far as the Center City PUD was concerned, you were saying, yes, you can go ahead and submit that, but that didn't give them approval for the PUD. They still had to go through Planning Commission and come back to you for the actual application. The 2019 delay was in March. We were a little bit behind. We had some delays getting the committee established, and so it was adopted in January, and it wasn't until March that we had the first meeting. We met nine times to June 3 of 19. And then we took the revisions back to council, and the document that we have right now was adopted on July 3 of 2019. So the base for a Form-Based Code, so it's a specific type of place. It's not really looking at the uses that are next to one another, as I outlined in my staff report, but it's really looking at shaping the physical form of the community. As you're walking down that street, you see the difference than what we previously had as the 25-foot front yard setbacks and such like that. The Form-Based Code really is supposed to be supportive of businesses as well as residential together. In the blue, we actually have the live-work option. We don't have anybody actually doing that at this time, but there is that option for the live-work in the blue. And the Form-Based Code really is looking at the preservation of the community, the history, and the protection of the environment. Within the document itself, the goal of the Center City vision was to reset the conversation and provide guidance for future development and redevelopment in the Center City area. This document, it's intended to implement the purposes of that plan and provide a strong implementation tool for that growth within that area. We were looking to capitalize on the public investment on existing infrastructure, stabilize and strengthen the opportunities for mixed-use commercial centers and residential neighborhoods. We're really looking at creating a pedestrian-oriented and multimodal district, promote and create the expanded housing options, transit-supportive development, and then ensure the complementary relationship with the surrounding neighborhoods as this area started to develop. The goals from the charrette, so these are the goals that were talked about in 2017. This is 2021, and I can tell you that these goals are exactly the same. We still are not getting or meeting these goals in many areas. You know, we want to recognize that this core area is not the same as the rest of Norman. We're really looking to promote mixed use in key locations within this area. We want that connection between downtown and campus corner. We want to increase the pedestrian and bike-friendly character. We're still looking for that "park wants" environment, but that really does refer back to the discussion about the parking structures, management of that strategy. And of course, it's millions of dollars. We're not there yet, but it's still something that we have to keep on the front burner. We want to make small-scale infill development easier, and we want to provide a range of housing options. We are just still not getting that range of housing options, and I think that's, I hear from people in the community, myself as a staff member, I think that's one of the things that I'm most frustrated with, is that we are not getting the range in housing options that was talked about from the very, very beginning. And to just expand on that a little bit further, there's nowhere within this development that's occurred in the last four years that is an opportunity for a young family, a young professional, to come into this area, which it was intended for, to purchase a house and live in this area. We've missed it. It's not there. Again, the challenges in 2019, we had the stormwater runoff issues. You know, what methods could we look at for that? We had some inconsistencies within the required build line. Corner lots, still a problem. We cannot figure out how to get those developed adequately and still meet that vision. We have several developers that are coming in, and we are spending a month. And I really am genuine when I tell you a month. We have one application a year. We have spent a year with this design professional and the property owner trying to figure out a way to get this corner lot developed. We are still needing a lack of architectural guidance. We have a disconnect from that function and form. There's an exemption of facade composition. And again, that goes back to the vision meeting the code. We're just missing it. And we've got to figure out ways to get that back in there and implement some guidelines, its actual regulations, to get that done. Again, I talk about James Garner. I talked about this last time. And again, I'm still on the issues that we had last time. We're only getting residential development on James Garner. Yes, people will walk from campus corner to Main Street, but as they're walking that distance, we want them to stop at retail shops. We want that retail interaction with those people that are coming and going from campus corner. And we're getting residential, and we're missing that opportunity. We also had the project plan for the incentive for development in line with the Center City vision. And then there's the parking impact. There was, within the code, it stated that City Council should determine a fee that developers could pay to council if they wanted to park over what was allowed in the area. That's still not been done. And I'll just, again, going back to this admin delay that we had before, we met nine times. We had an hour and a half, sometimes two-hour meetings, and we would get one thing settled. And it's not because it was, you know, ugly or anything like that. There's just so many options and so many items that we need to look at when we're looking at making these amendments to the area. Variation of housing types, I'll go back to that. We're still missing it. In the first round in 2019, we had 12 applications with 184 bedrooms. As of now, we have 32 applications with a total of 384 bedrooms. I put plus and minus up there because we have a lot of the applications that are coming in, and they are three-bedroom with the study. If you're going to have more than three bedrooms, you have to go to council and get a special use. They are, on average, converting that study into another bedroom. It's a market thing. There's a calculation. It's a business plan. They have this. They know how much money they can bring in with this number of bedrooms, and this is what they have to get. So I think that's something we need to talk about still. We have concerns with the side setbacks, pedestrian lighting, the on-street parking. We're creating gaps with this single-lot development. We've got a lot here that they do the parking, the inset parking. They don't. They do. So we're getting these gaps in the on-street parking. And then there's the alley improvements. You know, we've got people that are doing some of the alley improvements and some that aren't. So we need to figure out a way to get this continuous improvement within this area. In the 2019 options, there was an establishment of putting the residential on the ground floor and the urban general, and the requirement was to construct it with the, for the electrical code for commercial. So if someone did come back in at a later date and wanted to convert the residential unit to a commercial unit on the ground floor, that the wiring would already be there. Since that time, there's been some more research into the building code. And as you know, the majority of these units, the stairwell is on the inside. So you go in on the ground floor, you go up three flights of stairs. Well, you're not going to get a commercial business on the ground floor with an opening going up to the residential units without a lot of fire rating construction and stuff like that. So there'd be a lot of changes. I think that's something we need to look back at and really talk about that. Again, I go back to the time that staff is investing in this, and I can't, I mean, I have to acknowledge that the applicant's review time and the money that they're investing with their design professionals is also a factor. I mean, it is. We have, on the side lot setbacks, when we went back in the 2019, there were questions about whether or not people should be building from property line to property line. And we made a change there. We brought people up to the property line for the first 12 feet, 20 feet, and then they could jog in. However, we have found out since that time that adjacent property owners will not let the contractor on their property to build that wall. It can be done. It's expensive, but we've actually had some trespass violations filed on different contractors for literally an aerial trespass, where they leaned out the window and they were over somebody else's property line. And so in the townhouse small apartment frontage, you know, there's a single-family residential or stacked flats. That was one of the things that, in the very beginning, 2017, that we thought that the parking was going to be under these townhouses, and so they would be taking care of their own parking. It's just a design issue. It's designed that way in another city, but we're not designing that way. So I think that that's, again, something that we need to look at. From the ad hoc committee, we had several topics that we left off and when we, you know, said that we needed to get it back in front of council. But again, these are the items that were listed out at the ending. The architectural design review, guidance, the disconnect from the function and form, the parking congestion, possible amendments for that. The TIF, the recoupment area, how are we going to address that? Accessible housing, are we missing the accessible housing units? Affordable housing, this goes back to, you know, who's living there? Who has the opportunity to buy one of these lots? The market, I mean, and we can't control the market, but the market has driven the price of these lots up to where it's just impossible for a young family starting out to buy one. Again, the green space, you know, I think we missed some opportunities to purchase some land. Maybe we could still need to do that, but I think we are missing green space because that's really part of Form-Based Code. You have to have that green space area for your community. Signage is another question that we need to go through. And then, again, I put, you know, the August meeting, they, at the end of the meeting, they said, well, you know, maybe we'll get back together in August. Well, we didn't. There were some unforeseen issues that came up, and then we went into COVID for literally two years, and we're, here we are.
There we are.
Back here now. So the current challenges. When we did the 2019 amendments, there was the drainage discussion. There was a new section added to the code, and it talked about options for individuals that needed to go over or wanted to go over the 65% on the lot. And they had to submit to the city, to the departments, how they were going to contain the runoff and not impact, negatively impact adjacent property owners. We have pervious parking options that are going in now, and they are also taking credit for that pervious parking, which gives them the ability to cover more of the lot. But with pervious parking, there are maintenance requirements that have to be done on that, or the sand, the gravel, or whatever, as these cars drive over this. It just packs down into those crevices, and so then it essentially just becomes impervious area, and it's running off, and it's not helping anybody. Going back to the corner lots, we've got the side and front designations, you know, walls, no walls, height of walls, what constitutes a connection from one building to the next. There's many things that we need to iron out there. This design criteria that I've got up here, so we get an application in, and they say that they're going to window detail. I know that doesn't sound like a big deal, but when you've got this building that's 10 to seven feet from the front property line, you've got the sidewalk, and they brought an application in, and they've said they're going to do this detail on the window, and we get out in the field to do the inspection for the certificate of occupancy, and they didn't do it. And we said, well, you didn't do it like you said you were going to do it. But this is what we permitted. Well, it just got too expensive. I took that out, and I'm not going to do that. There is nothing in this code that gives us the ability to say no. You said you were going to do that. It was a design, you know, element to the building, and you have to do it. And we can't make them. And I think, again, this goes back to form. If you're looking at and the vision of this, that's what we need. Again, there's some, you know, conflicting regulations within the document. And again, I talked about the electrical code issue with the interior stairwell. That's something that we definitely need to look at. I am not trying to pick on anybody. I want to clarify this. I wanted you to see this. This is one of the new buildings that was built, and these tanks are their storage tank for their stormwater runoff. I do not believe that there's anybody that worked on the 2019 amendments had in their minds that this would be an option. Never in my wildest dreams did we ever think that this would be an option, but it meets the test of the code. It meets it. I'm sorry, but we have to change that. We do not want these in the back of these units. It is in the back. It's on the alley, but it still takes away from the credit of the development and the overall area there in Center City. So our current challenges. Again, I was talking about how, oh, I'm sorry. This is for the legacy-zoned areas. We need to know, you know, what really is the trigger for having to come to you with a CCPUD versus somebody wanting to make some changes, and it's less than 50%, but it's a different use. And so I really want to get some of that ironed out and get some definitive guidelines in there that say, if this is what you're doing, yes, you can do it, as opposed to making these people come forward to council with a CCPUD for some of these uses, you know, within these buildings. The bedroom issue, you know, I think that we've got to get a better definition of the bedroom, these study conversions. Or if it's not an issue, and that's what we want to find out, if it's not an issue for us, then we need to take that special use out because realistically, these people are in violation of what the Center City Form-Based Code is. If we're okay with them having four bedrooms without a special use, then we need to take it out of the code. But that's another thing that we need to talk about. Lack of penetration on the rear and interior walls. As these corner lots are developing, we've got the back of these three-story buildings sometimes with little to no windows. It's just a blank wall. Now, granted, it's not the side lot line on a corner lot or anything, but I think that we need to look at that and really make it, you know, more appealing for those people, for the community as they're, you know, driving around. The fee that I talked about a minute ago, we still need to establish that parking fee. The council needs to determine what that's going to be. The affordable housing options. You know, the trend that we're seeing is in the appendix, I mean, so the Exhibit A that I had in the staff report, you know, we're just not seeing multiple housing types. We're just missing that vision. A boundary change, you know, is the area too large? Is that something we want to look at? We want to change the boundary. Wait a minute. Did I just double a slide? Or did it not go? There we go.
There we go.
Sorry. So these are just some pictures. Again, we've got parking issues in the area. You know, they're not parking in a parking lot. They're parking in what should have been their green space for this development. Again, it's, it just needs to be cleaned up. We need to have some more guidelines for what we can have these developments do. When we have three, two units, three units with three to four bedrooms per each unit, we have eight poly carts in an alley, and this is how they end up. So do we want to look at, you know, having a centralized location for a dumpster? Do we want to require that they have a dumpster if they have so many units on there? I mean, there's one developer that has gone back in and actually placed units on there? I mean, there's one developer that has gone back in and actually placed some dumpsters on, on the developments that they manage, and it has really helped. It's taken 24 poly carts and eight recycle bins out of the alley, which they don't recycle. They put the trash in the recycle as well, so. So, you know, one of the things that we've always talked about is that this is a living document. I went back and I listened to the presentation in 2019, and we talked about this living document. You know, we should be looking at this every two to five years because things are changing. The community's changing. What's being developed down there is changing. So we want to look at that and, you know, probably establish a timeline that we want this done, you know, at a set time. Evaluating the inconsistencies, I've taught, you know, that are being built up and around with these larger three-story developments. Evaluation on the impacts on the public infrastructure, you know, I said a minute ago, we have 384 bedrooms in an area that probably had 180 four years ago. And then assessing if the vision, you know, is being met, you know, which direction do we want to go? Do we want to switch directions? Or do we want to become more restrictive and get exactly what we thought we were going to get in 2017? I took a picture of the well because this, I mean, it's an opportunity for us. There is some redevelopment coming into this area. We've got the well there now. We've got some transit opportunities that will be coming. And again, this goes back to getting the different housing types, different residents within the area. Got the bus services, and then we're also looking at the central, centrally, central location for a transit center.
Stephen T. Holman Transit Center.
You're going to cut the ribbon on that one.
That's too late.
And I wanted to take some pictures of some of the units. I just, random pictures, not, you know, supporting anybody's development or anything, but this is, you know, one of the developments that we've got. And there's no, there's no porch. I don't see a connection to the sidewalk. Something we want to think about. Do we want to have more of a connection up there? I mean, they go on the front door. That's it. So, this is one of the older developments. It was done before the 2019 amendments. Nothing wrong with it at all. It's just I took a picture of it. You know, this is, is this eight units on that form? Ten? Eight or 10? Eight or 10?
How many bedrooms?
Thirty-seven. I think this one has 37, something, something close to that. I mean, I could go back and look at them, but multiple bedrooms. And then this is a different one. We've got a, I think we've got a double entrance over there on the one on the left, so it's a little bit wider. Same thing here with this one. This is along James Garner there. I took this because, you know, this one is full. This is, this block with this infill coming in here, this area is complete. There's one opportunity for retail right here at this corner. Granted, I believe this has been open for lease for a very, very long time, and it's just, it's just not coming in yet. So, doesn't mean it won't.
Deepol is a business.
It is. No, I just meant this is-
No, it's not really a retail commercial business.
It's not retail, no, but it is a business, and, but it's taken, I think it's only been there a year?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's taken a while to-
They're a LA-based company that has an office right there. Yeah.
But this can also, I mean, this will give you an idea, it's, you know, how the site, the site line is going there with this as it develops out.
The vision was for a mixed use on the bottom. I mean, retail.
Retail, right, retail, and then the residential on the top. So, and I go back again to the fact that, you know, everybody, anybody that we've talked to, anybody that we've dealt with on this, you know, we all recognize that it's, you know, it's a living document, and that we, we have to change, this document has to change as the conditions in the community change. Again, the new issues arise. Some of the things that we thought were going to work, maybe they didn't. We need to update, look at revisions. So, in closing, you know, we present this information to you for discussion. We, we as staff believe that this is a perfect time for the ad hoc committee to come back into play. We've got a lot of questions, a lot of things that we need to evaluate and look at what we can do. And I think more importantly, it just goes back to the fact that the community as a whole, and when I say the community, I'm not talking just about Center City. I mean, this was a community-wide effort. And so, it's Norman. I should probably just say, Norman is not getting what was planned, presented, anticipated, you know, in this, in this overall development of the area. I think density is a good thing. I do not think density is a bad thing by any stretch, but we need different types of density. And again, we're not getting that. So.
So, Madam Chair, you'll recognize our community development director is eyeball-deep living in this document on a regular basis, and I am so happy. We have Mrs. Hudson at the helm. She's, she understands exactly what the council wants. She understands exactly what the intentions were, and she's at the door when the challenges arise. So, I think we are adequately up to the task.
I want to, of course, agree with you wholeheartedly. I don't know if you all have had an opportunity to read the extensive staff report that was attached. I just want to set up a little bit of context here, and then I'm really interested in your feedback. Councilmember Holman has actually been part of this process from, I want to say, day one. He was on the original steering committee. He has participated every step of the way. He was on the ad hoc committee that was called together two years ago. So, to have him sitting here today with his involvement from day one to present is really valuable. For myself personally, one of the reasons I have found myself actually sitting at the table is because I was involved in this process also from day one, but as a member of the community, and extremely interested in what was going on, what this was all about. This is a new type of, you know, zoning approach to things. And so, I also was present at the charrettes and all of the other things that I did. I was not on the steering committee. I did not go to that many of those meetings, but was involved in any community engagement through that whole process. And it was robust, and there were a lot of people in the community that participated from all across Norman. So, then fast forward, two years later, as you referenced, this is a living, breathing document. It was intended to be that way from the very beginning, and I think the community and the council at the time recognized that we were already running into some unforeseen consequences of how this code was written. And so, there was an ad hoc committee that was formed. Councilmember Holman was a council representative on that committee. I was on that committee as a representative from the community, so fully participated in that. And now, we fast forward two years later, and I really was struck by your recommendation that this is something that should be periodically reviewed and recommended two to five years. And I want to just emphasize that, at the time, the agreement of the committee that was serving at the time was we were going to take a pause to get the amendments before council. It was passed unanimously as a package. And then, we were going to reconvene, and a lot of different circumstances got in the way of that. And by the time we were really close to maybe getting it going again, we were dealing with all of the, you know, emergency approaches that we were taking to managing a pandemic. And so, in a way, it's almost a blessing that we find ourselves two years out again because we've literally gotten to see how the amendment package has worked. And I think there's some things that we could call a success, but what we've also come to learn is we still have so many areas that need to be addressed. And I want to acknowledge the entire planning staff and our legal counsel because we literally have been meeting for months to try to see if there were some quick fixes, or technical fixes, or editing fixes, or that kind of thing, that we could give them some relief, make it easier for those that are choosing to develop in Center City, and, you know, then save some of the bigger things for maybe at this time. But we literally could not figure out a way to be able to, be able to do that. And so, I have witnessed personally the impact that this is having on our staff. It's supposed to be a document that's easy for everybody to use, and that really is not where we are. And we continue to be challenged by all the things that she outlined. I'm not even going to go over all those things again. But I feel like the timing is right to, for sure, reconvene or reconstitute our committee. And I've reached out to the members that were on the committee in 2019. Some have moved on to other things, cannot serve right now, but we still will have that continuity with people who have participated at different stages of it. It's great that we have fresh eyes now to take a look at this because this is all new to you. And so, the one thing that I want to put out in the mix is when we put all this together in 2019, we also paired it with a temporary administrative delay. And personally, I feel that we need to discuss that and move that forward in a very expeditious kind of way because the planning staff has got to have the opportunity to take a pause. They are going to be staffing all of the committee meetings in addition to everything else they're doing. And I believe that we have to have that pause. And I'm suggesting, just like we used the model last time, six months. It really puts the pedal to the metal on the committee to not fool around and to address all these issues and see where we can get at the end of six months. There is an appeal process built in to do that, so it's possible for people to continue to do things. For me, I think the key pieces here are, we've been at this four years. We still have not attracted any new developers. We have the same three people that started in 2017. We have the same three today with the exception of maybe one here and one there. But for residential development, in the green, or the blue, the pink, and the yellow, we have not attracted any other developer at this time. We're also in a period where construction costs are sky high. The, you know, supply chain, it's not easy for anybody to be doing projects right now, so I think that also sort of plays into the timing of all this. So, for me, I am most interested in getting to work and starting to address all of these things, getting the feedback from our ad hoc committee and members of the community. And that's all I'm going to say about it and see what you all think.
And, Madam Chair, and Jane, correct me, if anybody has an application in process, it doesn't get put on hold?
Right.
So, if anybody's already made an investment, hired the architect, and submitted a plan, it goes through under the rules as they currently exist. So that kind of keeps the playing field level, and we don't catch somebody with us moving the goalpost in the middle of the game.
And I'd also like to point out that the last time around when we considered this, there were multiple applications that took advantage of the appeal process, and that moved forward in a fairly timely manner, I feel like. So, yeah. So, questions, comments?
I have some, I have some random questions because this is all new to me. So, I guess, big picture, are you just coming to us right now to try to reform the ad hoc committee? Is that what you're, is that basically what we're doing?
So, yes, I would like the direction from council to reform the committee. I will say, it is, I would say it's near impossible to have the ad hoc committee working on a document that we still have applications coming in because what do we apply to them? I mean, I know we could still keep this, and they could utilize that, but this is where we're having the problems.
But it's got issues. Yeah.
You know, and so, yes, I mean, I would, I would love that. You know, this is a 91, three-page document. I believe in my heart we can cut that in half, at least. I mean, it would, to me, to my staff, to us, as we've talked about this, and, you know, to the design professionals in the community, we want to be able to have them walk in. We'd like to hand them a four-page document.
Yeah.
This is what you have to do. And what you submit to us, you will do in the field. You won't change it, and if you do, you're going to bring it back to us, and we're going to review it again. They still have to go to DRT. They still get the COC, but it's through a very simple document of what they, they can do on their lot.
And I, I totally think that that's fair, and I could imagine the stress that you're having to deal with going through that, and what we've learned over time and things like that. Your hindsight's always 20/20, so it'll be easier to kind of clean some of that up. And this is just for my own personal questions. Just looking at some of that stuff was super overwhelming and confusing and trying to understand, like, for example, I'm curious on, I think it was the James Garner, why were those doors, why are they so high up? Why do we have such a steep stair to get into the front door? Is there something that was requiring that to be built that way?
This one?
It's because the buildings are brought closer to the sidewalk and street, and the consulting firm that we hired to do this years ago, one of the things they mentioned was if you're going to have ground floor residential within feet of the sidewalk, you do not want it to be level with it for privacy reasons and security reasons.
Okay.
And the aesthetic look, too, the historical look of the structures in this area, you'll notice all the houses have raised front porches.
Yeah.
And most of them, it's because they have basements.
Right.
None of these new ones have basements, but it was, so it was partly a, this is what the historical look of the area has been.
Okay.
And the kind of Brooklyn, New York City stoop was really the inspiration for that. And then, yeah, their recommendation that if you're going to have a bedroom, if that window is, it's probably a living room, but if you're going to have a bedroom within three feet of the sidewalk, you want it to have.
To be elevated.
So, that's how that originated.
Okay, that makes sense. The other one that I'm curious about is on the stormwater storage tanks. What, what is that? Like, for why?
How's that work?
Right, because, is it pulling water from there?
So, there's a couple things. There you go. Okay. So, they're hooked to the gutters.
Oh.
And the release-
So, it's the rainwater.
The release is down here at the bottom. And, I mean, you can see that this is a, I mean, it's a decent-sized lot, but buildings are large, and so, to meet that 65%, you know, they, they set up systems like this. They have the pervious parking.
So, this is holding the runoff so it doesn't flood the area and slowly releases it.
Correct.
It's just an obnoxious eyesore.
Just the runoff off the building.
We never imagined that above-ground storage tank would meet the criteria.
Well, when you mentioned that to me, I, I thought they were just something sitting in the backyard because the building wasn't finished yet, and it was just like a construction thing. And I was like, tanks, well. So I was thinking they're buried under, under the parking lot or something.
That would make sense.
So, yeah.
Aesthetically. And then my last question that I had, well, two questions. One, why, you had mentioned about the, the unit sizes, or the, I guess, the dwelling sizes that we want, and we're not meeting, we're not getting what we're wanting. Are you talking about specifically just like entry-level family being able to purchase homes, or are you also talking about like a one-bedroom unit where I'm not sharing my space with everyone else? Like, what, both? So then, is that not something that we can require the developer to do or include? Like, if they're going to do this type of unit, you have to have so many be this, this size, or? We could make that a requirement?
I think so. So, I think that's pretty unusual, but I think there are certainly some examples out there.
So, part of the issue, from my perspective of watching this now since 2017, number one, I think in general, we were a bit surprised at the single housing type model that sprang up and is- up and is, this was intended to be a build-out over 20 years or so. And so we've had a lot of really rapid development. And we literally are only getting a single housing type. And that is really part of the issue. This was intended to be an area that would appeal to a lot of demographic groups, that it would be a connector from downtown, a walkable active street from downtown to campus corner. That picture, that one, okay, having the well actually constructed and open, I think gives everybody a really visual reminder of what a transformational project can look like in Center City. Because it's done and it's open, it helps to underline the need to revisit what the original vision was of James Garner connecting from Main Street all the way to Campus Corner. It's intended to be high-density, mixed-use, multiple levels of residence, different types of housing, not just six, eight, 10-bedroom houses that appeal to one demographic group.
Gotcha.
And then that mixed use on the bottom. Well, the economics that were driving everything two years ago, kind of forced us as a committee to concede, well, okay, maybe we're just not there yet. And that's why we added the requirement to build commercial, to the commercial standard on that first floor, for where we actually are finding ourselves now. We have this transformational project, but all we're building is residential, except for that one corner lot that was a CCPUD to make that happen. And when you look at that now and you look at the well, I mean, for me, I'm just going, oh my goodness, here's the opportunity again. And if we don't take care of this, we're going to miss that opportunity to create that active connector street. And you know, the timing is perfect because now we actually see what the well looks like and what the response to the community has been, which is very enthusiastic. And they're interested in getting the street right just as well as we are as a city. I think we're seeing post-pandemic, people are, I think, you know, we haven't accomplished the live-work concept yet, but it's going really well in Oklahoma City. There's places in Oklahoma City, this is the perfect place to be able to have a small business or a retail presence on the bottom with people living on the top. So you know, and that's just one, oh my gosh, the list is so long. But I just feel like, you know, we've had to put it off for obvious reasons, but really the timing could not be better now to take that pause, take a look, you know, get some different perspectives. We've got the institutional history represented. We've got new people that would be coming on. And I think the staff has been in overdrive trying to help our small developers be able to work through this process without spending a year parsing words on a project. We want to do that to encourage, you know, an easier process. We also want to keep to the vision of providing that missing middle housing and we don't have any varied housing types. You know, one of the other things that I think there is a demand for that hasn't happened yet, these are all rentals. We've built a single housing type. You can only rent, I know people that are young professionals. I know people in my age group, you know, all the gray-haired people out there, that would love to have, to invest and own something in Center City. And so you look at the lofts that are on Main Street, they're all occupied. There's a demand for those. We just are not meeting the mark of finding, you know, maybe the same people that are already investing in Center City or maybe attracting new people with different design ideas. We're just missing the mark on all of that. So.
I have one final question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're going to have to move along.
All right. The corner lots issues, what is, what is, I guess, can you expand in that? Like what are you, what is the issue that we can't get developers to?
On corner lots.
Got two street frontages.
Yeah. So they have two frontages and they're supposed to do 100% on one frontage and 65% on the other. The idea when we did that was you're building lot line to lot line on the one side and then you get 65. We thought you would wrap the building and do it like a stacked flat. Instead, they, they just desire to do the same thing that they've been doing, which is they want to do as many units as they can, but they don't want to do the architecture to wrap it.
Okay.
And, and they still want to do their multiple bedrooms. So you know, if they were doing a stacked flat, they could wrap the building around the corner and have, you know, a unit here, a unit here, a unit here, kind of like what you were talking about. Maybe there's, you know, multiple different kinds of units, one bedroom, two bedrooms, three bedrooms. But no, they, they just want the, you know, four, five bedroom type. And so, yeah, that's, that's one issue. But trying to get that street presence on both corners, on both.
Those corners, is it? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. One thing I would note is we did have a different planning director last time
we, I think you were interim when we were, when we did the revision, but we had a different planning director altogether when we created this whole plan. And I do feel very confident in Jane's ability to help us get through some of these. I mean, just identifying the problems.
Right.
Is, is an accomplishment. There are a few things I had wondered about. We talked about previously that the, you know, we did just build a parking lot on Campus Corner and it may not be heavily used, but whether that met the legal requirement for the Campus Corner trigger, I guess, to become part of Center City. Because it's not a parking structure, like a parking garage, but it is a parking lot that we built. So that's a question that I had about it.
So my first response is no, but I'm going to let legal look into that.
Yeah.
Because that's part of that project plan and see if there's, yeah.
And that kind of came up in our CPTC meeting last month or in October when we were talking about employee parking. But just whether that met the spirit of the, but that is why Campus Corner is not part of the Center City, or the Form-based Code is because.
Commercial, yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that provision was, the reasons Campus Corner was left out is just the level of parking you would need to address the commercial needs plus if you're adding other uses.
Yes.
I'm not sure. I think our concern is that parking lot is probably not sufficient for a full build-out of whatever that vision is.
The.
Campus Corner is Center City.
The main issue for that compromise was that currently the C3 zoning on Campus Corner has zero parking requirement and no height limit. So like people wonder why Valare got to be as tall as it is because they could have made it 20 stories tall if they wanted to. They could build Devon Tower in the middle of Campus Corner with no parking under those, under those rules. So that is a property right though. And the people that owned property on Campus Corner, in order to get them to agree to implementing a height limit on new construction where they previously had no height limit, the kind of compromise was, well, build us parking and we'll agree to give up our height limit or our height, no limit. And so that's kind of how I recall how we came to that compromise was as soon as we build a parking structure to satisfy that need, there would then, all of Campus Corner falls under Center City Form-Based Code, which does have a height limit for Campus Corner. And so four stories or five, three on one side of the street, four, and then five in the middle, I think. So that was behind that. So that's why I was wondering about our parking lot. And then I think the concern about the range of housing options has always kind of been somewhat about the supply and demand, like what, what is the demand? And so like all the units that have been built, none of them, I know of them are empty. They seem to all be full before they're even finished.
Right.
So there is a demand. It happens to be a student-oriented demand, but that tends to be what is there. And it's kind of, does a developer come in and build this housing type that there may not be a demand for and just hope to create it? Or do they, what they are doing is just trying to build what they see as the actual demand perhaps.
Let me, so I just want to say, so, so that's an incredibly important point because you're right, we can't control that market. You're right, they are leased a couple of years in advance. They honestly are. It's what we're told, you know, from the community. So how do we fix that? Do we take the code and say, okay, the vision that we had before clearly is not going to be the vision that we get. So instead of having people in the community think that we've failed, because that's kind of what's happening, that the city has failed because we're not getting different housing types, do we want to change this? And do we want to say, you know, it's okay for this to be one housing type? Do we want to look at another part of the, the Center City area, the map itself, and redesign some of those areas so that, that there is a different housing type? You know, we've talked about other options for neighborhood planning within different areas and stuff. And so maybe the blue stays this single housing type and maybe some of the others become something else that we can, you know, implement in there.
Yeah.
Maybe we don't worry about this fourth, fifth bedroom in some of these areas that the single housing type, and again, direct our attentions elsewhere that have not been, I don't know, overtaken, but you know, so, so developed, so heavily developed when the, in this area right here. So you're right. I mean, it's, it's something that we've got to look at.
Yeah, that's been the real struggle is, for many good reasons, students want to live right in that area. It makes sense, you know.
And, you know, I, I always want to be really clear about this. I think there is a place for that and a balance of that housing type, which we certainly have. But when you look at just in the last two years and how, you know, I think we felt really successful about the amendment package that we put forward and we thought, okay, we're going to, you know, it, we're going to improve on this living document. And when you look at where we are now, we're, we've all survived a pandemic. We have people really reimagining what their lifestyle is going to be, what they're looking for, whether they're even commuting to work anymore. And when you couple that to what is potentially about to happen downtown, we have the well, we possibly have Factory Obscura coming to town. We have other really exciting developments getting ready to happen on Gray Street and other locations on Main Street. And I personally believe that there is a demand for other housing types. Doesn't mean we can't continue to supply. We're always going to be dominated by a student rental market in Norman. That's the reality and there's nothing wrong with that. However, I think there are a lot of people that are looking at downtown and looking at what the future of downtown and the Porter Corridor and everything else that are kind of just going, boy, I'd really, there was something down there that was a different housing type. I might just pack, pack myself and move down there. So I think we're in a different place, a very different place than we were in 2019, in a different place than they were in 2017.
Yeah.
And as we move forward with this, you know, I think your point is such a valid one, that there should just be a continual review every, every few years. So we're right on schedule if we want to look at it that way.
Yeah.
Councilmember Schuler.
Just a couple more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But the corner lot, I feel like, I understand how difficult it may be with our thing, but it seems like a lot of cities have figured out how to, I'm thinking like the boroughs of New York City. And that's where I came up, you know, that's where I found that inlet thing, was I looked at a Google Map picture of Brooklyn and saw how they had buildings next to each other, but the back part was cut out so that there could be anywhere. But like surely those cities, New York, Chicago, all the Midwest cities.
And I think that's when you get the block development. I think those corner lots were more easily developed when you had that block development.
It was the whole thing.
I mean, these are the pictures that the community saw when this document came forward. And again, like I said, I don't want the community to look at us as the city and think that, you know, we didn't bring in what, what we were going to. But you know, this is what they saw. This is not what's on the ground.
And just.
Not that it's a bad thing. Again, I feel like I have to say that, you know.
So far, nobody's been able to amass an entire block except for the James Garner frontage that Peter was able to do.
Exactly.
And then the James Garner mixed use, I assume the wedge has the first floors being built as commercial standard since it is along there? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And then the parking fee, I mean, I have mixed feelings about that because I don't really want to allow more parking. I don't really want there to.
There's no room for more parking.
I don't want there to be a fee or any other way. Like I want people to move into this area, like from day one with the expectation, I don't have anywhere to park extra. And I would ideally like us to so aggress, like New York City aggressively enforce the parking requirements in this area. So that truck couldn't be on that green. He would have been towed that morning. I mean, I know there's staff, you know, lots, lots of things that go into that. But ideally, that's the type of environment I'd want is if you're moving in here, you know that you're not going to be able to just park anywhere. And you might, you know, you might have to park several blocks away if you want your buddy to come over.
I mean, that could have been made preventable by just a curb.
Sure. And then the storage tanks, I would think, if that's a usable option, that it would, should have to be under buried at the very least. I mean, and then, yeah, density, kind of the way I look at the density part is 382 units is the size of a very large apartment complex, right? Like Crimson Park and the cottages and the avenue. And those apartment complexes, some of them are bigger than all of the Center City combined, you know, the whole area. And so part of me says, well, we've been able to put that many units into this denser area, which accomplishes part of what we're trying to get is more people. And that is one less mega apartment complex off Highway nine or off, you know, 24th or something that wasn't built because of that. So that's kind of where I get, you know, part of the intent was we do want that, but you know, not just uncontrolled whatever's going on too at the same time.
Their unforeseen consequences.
So it's been like a pool because we are seeing success in my view of we're increasing the density, we're increasing the walkability because we've removed a lot of the driveways. It's noticeable. And a lot of the folks that are living in this area are people that go to the restaurants and bars and spend money and do those things. So, you know, I wish it had some pictures of the development that was happening before Center City was approved. So what started was a large, high-density apartment building that was going to be built on Campus Corner called the Riser Project on Asp and Duffy, right behind the deli and all that, where our parking lot is. There was, there was a proposal for a six-story tall with a basement parking garage, ground-level retail, a couple hundred units, right there on Campus Corner. Nothing like that had ever been proposed there. There was a whole back and forth that project ended up getting pulled. But kind of as a result, people started buying properties around, like on Jenkins, on Duffy, on Monette, and started tearing down the houses and building these two-story, what I call cookie cutter duplexes. They all have like a front porch, two-story front porch. They all have a pitched roof and they're all brick. And so, and they still have the driveways and things like that. And I really did not like how any of those look. And I wish we had some pictures of them because there's one street, Sims, I think, where one side of the street was all developed in tho, in that form before Center City. And then the other side of the street is all developed in the Center City. So it's all row houses, no driveways, looks real clean. And the other side is like real setback, two-story.
And cars in the front.
So we felt like those were not dense enough and were not fully using the, you know, potential of that area. And so that's how Center City came as, well, this area is being redeveloped anyway without any regulations. It's being redeveloped under our 1950s zoning and nobody seems to really like what's coming out of that. And so what do we want to see? If we know this area is going to be redeveloped anyway, people that own the properties are willingly selling them to people and those people are deciding to tear down the houses and build new stuff. So let's come up with a plan for what we want it to look like. So that's kind of how it started and we got here in a short.
And here we are. I think we still have to consider the aging infrastructure in the area.
Yes.
So that's, that's still going to be.
Yeah, the alleyways being the biggest.
Do you have, do you have anything else?
That's it.
Anything you have to add?
That's worth the, I'm willing to entertain the admin delay.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I don't have a ton to say outside of what the other councilmembers have said, but just want to kind of make a point about the housing type. I think that that's a really important aspect. And it's one of the things that I think is really important to, to me specifically. Because it's one of the things that like I would love to have lived in this area as a young professional looking to buy my first home in Norman. And, you know, I know coming from, you know, another area of the, the country that townhomes are a great starter home for young professionals, young families are also great for. are a great starter home for young professionals, young families, are also great for, as Council Member Hall said, like our aging population, and are great for, you know, density and things like that. And it's, we don't have that type of housing model. Yes, we're getting this, but it is geared towards our student population. And so I would like to say that there, this is about what is marketable and what is going to make money, not necessarily what the demand is and what will sell, right? Like, this is something that will make money in multiple, multiple years, right? It's not somebody buying a house one time and a purchase and then moving on. But I think, as we've talked about many times, we need affordable housing, we need more housing units in Norman, period, across the board, not just student housing. And so we need a different mix. And so I think that, all of that to say that I think that the presentation, your staff report, Ms. Hudson was so thorough, and, I mean, I think that this is the right time, I think that we need to take a look at, for all of the reasons that were listed. So I'm just really lending my support, and I know that we need to move on.
Councilmember Schuler, there's a saying in land use economics that says scarcity creates value, and we know we're, you know, 9,000 affordable units short, and we know we're going to have to come up with 23,000 additional rooftops to keep up with our population growth here in the near future. And we did have conversation early on about Gray Street, and right now Gray Street is not part of this. Is Gray Street?
West of the railroad tracks.
Rest of the tracks, yeah.
The thought of the vacant lot across the street from where we believe Factory Obscura will be wildly successful, and we talked about, oh, that was supposed to be a parking structure, and it's not necessarily optimal for a parking structure, but it could be crazy optimal for multifamily, and in the thought of not rental, but a condo opportunity where people could own and invest and benefit from. I see what you see. I think the demand for that, if people can see it, and where do I, it'd be sold long before the paint dried, and council would have the opportunity on parcels the council owns to say, this is what we're going to build, and, you know, development community, bring me a proposal, y'all want five stories of housing and the ground floor commercial, and what's that look like? And, you know, joint parking, and the opportunity is right there before us. And I think as soon as Gray Street goes two ways, the demand for the real property on Gray Street is going to go way up. We have an opportunity to be in front of that, west of the tracks on Gray.
Yeah.
And hit it out of the park.
And I mean, I would just like to couple this with the conversation, I mean, since we're talking about housing types and things like that, we're not having this problem just in Center City.
Right.
About a single-use type and what's being built. We're getting so much single-family in other areas that I would not say is affordable housing or entry level in any capacity. And so, yes, we need, you know, more units, we need housing, we're growing, we're one of the fastest-growing, you know, cities in the state. So we have to think differently, and we have, we've got to bring in opportunities outside of just Center City, but across Norman, for opportunities for different housing types.
So I want to make sure we give due diligence to our other agenda items. So unless there's anything else to be said, I think, you know, what I'm hearing is that, yes, we're in support of reforming the ad hoc committee, yes, we're in support of pairing that with an administrative delay under a very similar model that we did in 2019. So this is a time-sensitive issue, and I think we need to move this as quickly as possible. So that's the consensus I'm hearing.
Yes.
That's the direction that we want to go. So Mr. City Manager, how fast can we do this?
Actually, we can, because Jane, she lives for work, we can do, we can have the agenda item ready for next Tuesday night for the administrative delay.
Okay.
And I don't think our city clerk will beat us too mercilessly by having one more item on the agenda. We hope to print tomorrow before noon.
Okay.
And have those agendas out tomorrow afternoon, and we can include that administrative delay component in there.
Here's the street I was talking about.
Yeah.
So that's Center City.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And that's what was being built before Center City.
Yeah, yeah.
Under the old building, so.
And, you know, one of the, the last comment I'm going to make is, you know, one of the reasons that...
The best depiction, the picture is worth a thousand dollars.
Again, the timing is right. One of the other council goals, and I know that planning understands that this is something that we need to get back to, and that's our land use plan. And we felt like we really needed to see how far we could get with this, and the land use plan is coming right behind it, and that, you know, another goal, so you all have your work cut out for you, and hopefully, you know, we will, in the end, be able to simplify, to get us back to what our community is expecting, and make it easier all the way around, so that there's not this endless loop of trying to interpret what is meant. So I'm very excited to move this forward. Thank you so much.
So if I could just say, Jane, you described the Logan House.
Yes.
So that's a beautiful place.
Yeah.
And I thank you very much.
That's what we were trying.
Yes, I know, and that's why I want...
That's what we wanted.
And I appreciate the tremendous hours of work that you and your staff have put in to get ready for this, because it's been a long conversation, so.
Yeah, thank you, I think you, we will get to work.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay, moving right along. And remember about that hard stop part, so we're going to keep it going. The next item is discussion regarding the potential purchase of a van for the proposed mobile crisis response unit. And Ms. Walker, I know, has a presentation for us, so thank you.
As Catherine is switching over hardware, this was a conversation during council's goals and objectives, and of course, those goals and objectives lead to committee meeting conversations, and then lead to council agenda items, once we've got consensus that we know we're on the right track. So when this particular conversation came up, we did recognize through conversations that our department had meetings, that we had very similar relationships with a vehicle we refer to as the Qantas Cruiser, and that kind of gave us a starting point to figure out how we could accomplish this task with precedence, and Catherine's done a ton of homework on it.
Yeah. So it even started before the retreat, when you all adopted the budget in June, you might recall allocating some money to fund a mobile health crisis unit. Then, a few months ago, the time just is elusive to me, I can't remember when, the Department of Mental Health came and talked to us about 988 and their plan to staff a call center that would respond to mental health crisis calls, and deploy a mobile crisis unit to respond to those callers who are in crisis. So you all have talked at different times about other, you know, ways to address the outstanding needs in the community, in a way that doesn't duplicate what the mental health department is doing, but addresses other needs we know exist in the community, while, and we've even talked about a van. And I think at one point, we brought you some prices for a van. So we've kind of got bits and pieces along the way. So we wanted today to kind of bring this all together and kind of talk about what that would look like going forward. As Daryl said, the Qantas Cruiser is a program that you may not have heard of, but you fund it through our outside agency funding each year. We have several contracts that if they're the same amount, they just roll over and are automatically renewed, and you all budget funds for that every year. The Qantas Cruiser, I thought, was operated by the Qantas Club, just my own ignorance. In doing this research, we learned, it's actually Aging Services that does this, and so it's for people over 60 and adults with disabilities, at least 18 years of age. They got funding through a Title II grant, and they've received that grant for over 40 years, and that's what funded their purchase of this van and the provision of the service. What we do is each year, we give them money to pay for gas and maintenance at the van. And it's about, I think, $14,000, or about $14,500, to cover that cost each year. And so we do a contract with them, and that funding is provided, and they provide reporting and meet other requirements in relation to that. This would be a little bit different, because we would be buying the van, it would be our asset, so we would be contracting with an agency to provide these services on behalf of the city. And the way we do those type of things, when people are providing services on behalf of the city, we typically will do an RFP process, so a request for proposals. We publish that, we send it out to interested entities, and then they have three or four weeks to submit their proposals. A committee is put together to look at those, committee usually interviews a couple of firms, maybe all of them, depending on how many apply. And they're looking at certain things. You know, as a city, of course, we want to make sure that the services that we need to be provided are provided and provided well, that we are addressing our potential liability issues. So insurance, things like that are going to be a big part of it. And then we want to set reporting requirements, so we know how those taxpayer dollars are being utilized. So typically, we're going to ask for documentation of a status as a nonprofit, a 501(c)(3), some record of the financial ability to perform the contract, professional liability insurance, in this case because of the van, automobile liability insurance, workers' compensation insurance, those kind of things. And we're going to want to know, who are you going to use to staff this program, what are their qualifications, what kind of training will they go through, and what policies do you have? And beyond that, I really see that the proposals, the proposers will have an opportunity to be kind of creative about how they see this service evolving to meet the needs of the community. I've looked up some, and there aren't a lot out there that I could find that's just transportation only. A lot of this is rolled into a broader contract in many cities, larger cities, for homeless shelters, homeless outreach, all kinds of things. But there are some examples for just the transportation, and so, and some of them, they're identifying the points they want the transportation to occur to and from. So it might be from the shelter to a doctor's office, the shelter, our shelter, to food and shelter for a meal, to service providers, things like that. Not a shopping trip, not the liquor store, not, you know, pretty specific to meeting the needs of the community, right? I think we want to, so we want to see how that would, how each proposal would propose to meet that need and provide that transportation, we want hours of operation, that kind of Once we select a firm or an agency or entity to move forward with, then we're going to negotiate with them to develop a contract, and that's really where we're going to set forth sort of the rules of engagement. Even in our contracts with the outside agencies for $5,000, we require reporting, they have to allow us to audit their books, you know, because at the end of the day, we have to treat taxpayer dollars that we give to other agencies like we would if we kept them, right? So we have to know how they're spent, and they're on a public purpose and those kind of things. Like I said, I think we would want requirements for regular reporting, how many people have you transported, what were the needs, that kind of things, how are you going to maintain these vehicles, background checks on employees, and all those things to make sure the service that provided is a quality service, and that we're protected if things go awry. So with council's direction, we're ready to move forward about the next few months. It will take some time, I think, I think if we want to move forward with something like that, whatever agency responds, I used to work for, you know, agencies that would respond to grant opportunities, and they need a little bit of mobilization time. If you can't award the grant, they start the next day. So it might be something that could start July 1st, something like that, to give them time to kind of gear up whoever ends up getting the proposal.
As Catherine and I were chatting, the opportunity for us to provide room in the responses to that request for proposal, for different agencies to maybe identify levels of service that we had not contemplated, that could really fit, a gap in service that has recently been identified by the folks at Homebase. The data we have available in terms of gaps analysis can give us a great opportunity to use as the basis of evaluation of some of those proposals coming in. So I think timing-wise, you know, better to be lucky than good, and we got really, really lucky on the timing of this. So where in mind, we kind of had, we knew what brand of vehicle we were going to buy, and that may, that may be an error, I mean, because we're thinking of the level of services we see it, but the service providers may have a whole different solution that much better fills the gap that Homebase identified than anything staff was thinking about. So we think we can provide those opportunities for the respondents to really, you know, come in and hit the target.
Yeah. Are you, is there anything else you wanted to add, or are you just looking for?
No, I'd be happy to get feedback on what you will see as maybe minimum requirements that we would want.
Okay.
As Daryl said, we do want to leave flexibility in there for the proposals, you know, to address needs that each proposal thinks we need to be addressing. But we also want to make sure whatever we need as a minimum is being met.
Okay. Well, just a few comments to get us going. I, again, timing is everything, and this was something that I actually wanted to add to the agenda this month, because we are fortunate enough to have resources identified for what we call the Mobile Crisis Response Unit. And, oh my goodness, how things have evolved just since June. And I think we all share the optimism about bringing 988 online and the ability of our state agencies and Cleveland County to be able to address behavioral and mental health issues, but I think what we've all been searching for is, okay, where are the gaps in service still for our community, and we have the funding to start moving this forward to explore how a mobile response unit could work to address this particular population. Doesn't mean it can't serve others, but I think what we've really tried to do is narrow our focus so that we're not duplicating any services, but start the conversation now so that we can be ready to fit this in with everything else that's going on. And again, you know, we've been just basically trying to be patient to see the final results of our Homebase study that's been ongoing since January, and we just completed community meetings, we've had community feedback, and they've literally summarized an 80-page document into just a couple of pages. And I was so struck as we were reviewing all of these system gaps in services at the community meetings on Monday. The fourth system gap is to address transportation to employment, services, and shelter. Develop a comprehensive transportation strategy in partnership with local transit authorities. I think we're already at work on that, and realizing that we need routes in different places, priority places in town, we need bus stops in places that we weren't able to adjust until now, so we're definitely taking the results of the transit study and moving forward with all that. But right here, it is bullet point, consider expand a subsidized ride-sharing program or creating a van service.
And we just learned about micro-transit recent, I mean, it's starting to make really good sense.
Work with healthcare providers to set up transportation to and from medical appointments, set up locations where personal belongings and service animals may be stored while people utilize transportation to access services. So to me, we are right on the money, we are right where we need to be with the recommendations from Homebase and what we recognize ourselves in the community. And personally, I am ready to move forward with the purchase of a van, and I realize that there are a lot of details to be worked out, we definitely have interested partners in our community that are working on this, and so I'm willing to take that first step and see what we need to do to, you know, make sure that we have our funding set aside to purchase a van, and what the details are for the operator part. I mean, the way I see it is, this is just a building on wheels, it's an asset, we have operators of all stars and stripes all over the place, and they're not all the same, this wouldn't be the same either, but it's the same concept of, we can invest in a need and provide the vehicle, and then locate the operator that can provide the service. Councilmember Schuler?
Yes. Agreed. But I had a couple, I guess, logistics questions on kind of exactly how we're thinking about scaling this up and kind of the process, and then contract, and some different things. So, you know, I think our agenda item is talking about us purchasing a van, but then as City Manager Pyro and Ms. Walker were talking, I was thinking, maybe you're saying that we don't know yet what we want to purchase based on the RFP?
Exactly.
Trying to decide exactly, and allowing the service provider to kind of help us narrow in and hone in on what vehicle would be best, or if it's... in and hone in on what vehicle would be best or if it's multiple vehicles or something like that?
Absolutely. Yeah, sprinter versus much smaller vehicle or two vehicles or, you know, 12-passenger van, 15-passenger van, depending on how it's to be utilized and only the service provider will know how they intend to utilize it, could really have an impact. And they each have budget ramifications that are completely different. So our fleet superintendent, Mr. Mike White, you know, a legit car guy, can also support the successful responders' request and say, here's what we need. And then Mike from the fleet side can say, okay, here's what we can get relatively quickly knowing all the vehicle makes and models. Here's what we can most easily maintain. It'll be most cost-effective for the program going forward, taking into consideration, you know, fuel mileage and, you know, all that kind of stuff. By the time the respondents to the request for proposal have been submitted, council will award, now we'll start working in conjunction with that successful respondent and we can make those decisions jointly and then bring back, okay, council, on this agenda, we want to buy this vehicle or these vehicles and this is how they'll be utilized.
Okay. So we're not deciding exactly what we're trying to purchase now, just that we're moving forward, that this is what we would like to do and that that's going to come in conjunction with our RFP and what kind of comes out of that process. And then we'll pull the trigger with all of that then.
Yep. We think that's the smartest way to use the money and your dollars are set aside in the budget specifically for this purpose.
Perfect. Okay. So really you just need to say, we're supportive of moving forward with purchasing a van, allocating this money in this way. Okay. So yes, I'm for that. And then when we're thinking about utilizing this as an asset, like a building or anything like that, we typically, as a city, would be responsible for maintenance of a facility, upkeep, things like that. So what would be, what would our provider be responsible for? Would that be just things like gas and things to move around or would we still, as a city, be allocating money for those types of things or just?
Yeah, potentially they could fuel up at our fuel islands. Maintenance on the vehicle is very important. When you're a contractor and you're transporting other people, one of the things that we do on the Colinas Cruisers, I mean, we just make sure it's always up to ODOT standards, got good brakes, got good tires. And in that particular instance, the lift is a very expensive thing to maintain that we happen to know how to do really well. So we take on all the maintenance and the fuel. I'm not sure, they provide the insurance, I'm sure, in that instance. And we think in this case, the operator who will be driving it, they'll provide the insurance because they'll be in control of who has the keys and behind the wheel.
Right. And so we would be making sure that these vehicles would also be ADA accessible and making sure that, you know, because we're the ones who are providing that, that that would be a part of our RFP, correct?
Absolutely.
All right. I think those are my questions, but definitely supportive of this money being allocated in this way and kind of moving forward. Oh, I, one more question. What is, I guess, the timeline of when we could get the RFP out and start, I guess, getting submitted proposals?
Are you looking at me?
Do we have an idea of that yet?
We've got some drafts that, you know, we'll be cutting and pasting. I don't know, you tell me, in January?
Yeah, I think in January we can get it out on the street.
So at this point, it would be, you can start working on the details and then it would come back to oversight? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. Okay. Did you have any comments or Councilmember Holman?
She pretty much asked what I was going to ask. I was just trying to clarify the maintenance aspect of that. The other thing that I do want to bring, bring up, just to put this out there, is that we did allocate this money in our budget with the anticipation of catering to mental health crisis as well. I thank God for 988 and that they're coming in and I'm glad that we're the first city in the state to get to do that. But I still want to say, maybe next year when we budget, we don't have to necessarily have the 500,000 because the mental health aspect is covered, but we can still have half or whatever that seems.
Absolutely.
To continue to budget in annually because we don't know where this is going to go.
You know, and what we recognize with several of our continuum of care, local nonprofits, once they achieve this status and they're in this relationship, their ability to qualify for all kinds of other funding are going to be there, whether it's, you know, through the United Way or through Community Development Block Grant or through other state and federal dollars, those opportunities become wide open. So we've got a lot of nonprofits that are 100% grant-supported and have been around for a long, long time and just continue to grow.
Any other comment? Did you have any comments, Councilmember Holman?
No, in agreement, I agree with that too.
Okay. Well, then I think next step is starting to work through the details and we'll put that back in your capable hands, Ms. Walker and Mr. City Manager. And I know we have community partners that are very interested in seeing if maybe they can help make a difference. And I just want to end on the note that, you know, it takes, it really does take a village to attend to all these things and to try to solve our problems. And there's certainly a role that cities can play and, or our city can play in how dependent we are on the success of our nonprofits. And I was so struck at one of a recent council meeting to be reminded that some of our most established, successful nonprofits literally started because of the passion of a few people to address the need that they saw in the community. So I'm excited to see where this goes and I'm really happy that we're moving it along and demonstrating our commitment to helping to provide the vehicles and the mechanism to get this off the ground and we'll see where it takes us, so.
We are really just appreciative of council in the boat and, you know, we refer to our, one of our mottos is semper gumbi, always flexible. Because the terrain moves, what started out in the world of mental health and then all of a sudden a separately funded solution presents itself, and then the gaps analysis and we have this resource, we, we're going to look like rock stars because we are still right at the front edge of this curve.
Yes.
And it's because council's flexible, everybody's keeping their eyes and ears open and we are willing to explore opportunities as they present themselves, that we get to go. And it's just, thank you, this makes our jobs actually so much easier because we can come to you and we can talk and bring some solutions that we weren't on this mental thought during goals and objectives. And then we get this reported and lo and behold, we're still ready to go.
Yeah. So appreciate, again, all of, there's just been intensive staff input to get us ready to have this on the agenda today, so I'm really grateful for that too. So, okay, got that done, excited about moving forward on that. Thank you so much. Last but not least, let me just remind everybody, hard stop at six. So, so our final agenda item is staff report on homeless activity. And I just, again, for those that are watching from home, this is a new addition to the Oversight Committee. For several years, the city council had an ad hoc committee in place to address homelessness. And because of just lots of changes and getting to the end of the road with our Homebase study and feeling like it was important to get more council members involved now, this seemed like the logical home to have a monthly update from our homeless coordinator, very similar to the same model that we use in community planning and transportation. We have one of our staff members, Mr. Taylor Johnson, that every single month presents an update on public transit. And so I've been able to have some conversation with Ms. Evans and, you know, this is the first time we're doing this and so we're going to make it brief today and it's a little bit of a work in progress. So take it away.
And I'm going to go get that booster.
Yay, for you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for having me. I don't have copies for everybody, so I'll hold it up, I guess.
It's okay, it's on our, yeah, it's on our iPad.
Perfect. Okay. So this is what I think, our fourth one?
Yes.
So we, yeah, fourth, thanks.
So it is a work in progress.
It is definitely a work in progress and we wanted to make it kind of just really simple and a nice, easy, fun infographic. So I'm going to just go through the numbers and starting from the top. So with the big circle, the most important, right, is the actively homeless. So how we get to that actively homeless number, for the most recent one, as of November 30th, it's 160 individuals. And 160 individuals meaning they have had the VI SPADA and they have been identified by one of our COC partners. That's where that 160 comes from. And then from that number, we get lots of other data that HUD is interested in each month that they want to know out of that number, what else is going on in your community. So we always report returned from housing because that's really important to know who's returning, right? Who's getting evicted? And if you are evicted, those individuals, we want to rehouse as quickly as possible because we want to prioritize them. And also maybe leaving housing for other various reasons. So we report that number. And let me also say, where these numbers are reported from are from agency partners. So each week, every week at Friday, our CCM meeting, which is coordinated case management, they're giving us these numbers. So we're tallying that up, you know, pretty quickly. The next one off to the side is 16 from, as of November, newly identified. So out of that 160, we want to know how many people are coming into our community that are being assessed with the VI SPADA, so newly identified. And that's from lots of different areas. Do you have a question?
So just to be clear, 160, that is the total number of known homeless or unhoused people in the entire city of Norman that we know of?
That we know of, yes. And I would say all of Cleveland County as well. Now, that number is those that have had the assessment, not that all of that are known. The recent point in time, which is coming up, we're getting ready for that, that number is a lot, a lot bigger. That's usually around 300. Those are identified. These people are the ones who've had the SPADA, the VI SPADA, the assessment. So that's the difference. And those are really two, that's a great question.
Yeah.
Because that's a really important, to distinguish between those two numbers.
I think this is a source of confusion. And if you don't mind.
It is.
For the acronym.
Yes.
Deficient.
Absolutely.
Could you just expand a bit on what the VI SPADA, what that assessment tool is?
Absolutely. It's the Vulnerability Index Specialized.
There you go.
So what that assessment is, it's a bunch of questions that we use to see where this individual is in order to offer resources. So, and it goes by a scoring mechanism. If they, if we do this assessment and they score anywhere from zero to four, by HUD standards, their determination is, they might be able to figure it out. They might have just needed a little bit of assistance, maybe one rent, a month's rent, maybe some food assistance, maybe some employment. If they score between four and seven, that's the range that we consider rapid rehousing. So our agencies get funds for that. They might need three to six months of housing assistance, possibly a little bit longer. Those that are scoring eight and above, and the highest score is 15, those are what we consider, those are our chronic individuals. Those are the ones that are coming to us that have long-term homelessness, multiple issues, whether that be substance abuse, mental health, those are the individuals that we staff every single Friday and we really try to prioritize and get housed as quickly as possible. So that's where that VI SPADA comes in handy. And I will say too, this 160, that number constantly is changing because we have what we call our coordinated entry and we have a no wrong door, meaning in anyone who identifies as being homeless in all of our jurisdiction, which includes city of Moore, Little Axe, Lexington, because we, again, we are Cleveland County.
South OKC.
Yes, absolutely, yes. So it's a very large area that we do cover. So anyone that identifies as being homeless, they can get the VI SPADA at any one of our agencies when they identify.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question.
And while we're at it, could you just elaborate on what the by-name list is?
Oh, absolutely. So the by-name list is one of this really cool tools that in the very beginning, you know, HUD wanted you to identify your homeless individuals. So how do we do that? We prioritize the individuals by a by-name list. So every day, this number, right, we're getting the VI SPADA's that are completed from our agency partners, that gets sent to us, we do that assessment and depending on the score, we just put them literally on a list and it's their name, their age, whether, their age, if they're a family member or single, and it has various other points of data that we have to have. So we literally put them in an order of priority and the highest down to the lowest. And because the highest, again, those are those individuals that we really need to house the quickest. Those are the individuals that are going to need most resources. So the by-name list is nationwide, it's a tool that is recognized by our HUD partners, by our Built for Zero partners, and it is just a standardized tool that we use in order just to keep track of everyone, easiest way.
Thank you.
Absolutely. It gets, there's a lot of acronyms, a lot. The other number that's really important is the house number, right? Because we want to know how many people are coming off of our list, not just coming on our list. So as of November 30th, three people were housed. So it sounds kind of low, but I'm going to kind of go off a little bit and go over to that green circle where it says 91 days. And this goes back to not enough affordable housing. It is taking us over 90 days to house one single individual. And I'm going to tell you, there's some that's been on this list for six months, seven months. And again, that's the struggle, right, that we talk about, where are we putting these individuals? We need more affordable housing because that number, industry standard, they would love to see that to be 25 days or less. It happens sometimes, but not very often.
Councilmember Holman.
So in regard to that, one of the possible potential solutions we had discussed a few months ago, I'm not sure if you were in that meeting or not, but the Emerald Greens apartment complex and it being in really bad shape, it's in my ward and I definitely, we had a cookout there with the police back in the summertime and several of the residents came up to me and once they found out, they were like, let me tell you about this place. And I guess that they lost their Section 8 designation, so they can't accept that anymore. But one of the solutions I think we threw out at the retreat maybe was like, what if we made an offer to try to buy that whole apartment complex? Or some sort of effort like that to get it, get that and then use that as a, I mean, it already is where a lot of lower-income people live, but trying to maybe convert that, I don't know if, we haven't had any further discussion about that since then, but that was one potential option for a whole chunk of cheap housing that we might be able to get ahold of without having to build something new.
From the ground up.
Potentially. And get it out of the situation that it's in under its current ownership too, is kind of a...
So I guess I would say that there are a lot of conversations going on, on how to address this number because I think everybody in the room recognizes that we have a very serious connection issue with, we may have the resources to provide temporary housing in really, there are basically three categories, but we are really challenged right now. And, you know, this came up earlier in the day, we have just hired a housing navigator to assist on the city side and she has hit the ground running to try to start making these connections and help people who might have housing. So if you're out there and listening, we definitely can put you in touch with our housing navigator, Andrea, if you're interested in trying to address this because we have some resources to house people for sure, but this is really the big elephant in the room at the moment, I think.
Absolutely. I agree. And that was another good point, Stephen, that you said, it's not only the housing, it's what housing we do have, that's reasonable, right? That's acceptable. So that's, that's a very...
I mean, yeah, three months, you know, that's a whole season, basically.
It is.
If you don't apply by the beginning of fall, you're going to be out the whole winter maybe. If you don't apply by the beginning of spring, you're going to be out in the summer.
Correct.
That's definitely, I think we could definitely aim for better as a community.
Absolutely, I agree.
Okay. I hate to intervene, but I want to make sure we stay on time because you all may not be aware that Lieutenant Carrie Bryant, oh, was here.
Oh, he's over there now.
Oh, there he is, there he is. He moved. That was that noise. And he's going to have a little bit of a report too, so.
Absolutely.
Let you move on.
Absolutely. So 31 in a housing plan, so that's another interesting number. So 31 people out of that 160 are currently in a housing plan. That means they are attached to a case manager and really on the cusp of being housed. They're already attached to a grant, a voucher, and they're just waiting to get that permanent supportive. Inactive number, that's another really important number. By HUD standards, zero when inactive as of then. If an individual is inactive, that means they have not engaged with an agency or their case manager in 90 days. That is the HUD standard. So, and I don't ever take anyone off the list, they're just there and marked inactive. So that's really important. 69 people were in transitional housing. Transitional housing, consider it food and shelter, McAllen Village, Transition House and Mission Norman. That's transitional housing, which is typically two years or under, sometimes 12 months, but that's the average. Three families were identified and then 46 people averaged sleeping in shelter. were identified. And then 46 people averaged sleeping in shelter. That does include Salvation Army as well as ours. Our capacity is still 35 a night. We are still practicing safe distancing on the inside, adults only. Yeah, that's, that's it in a nutshell. And I do want to say, as far as Homebase, at to date, thank you all for doing the survey, we really appreciate your feedback. 161 surveys have been completed. Out of those, seven people with lived experience, we would love to see that number go higher. System of Care Providers, 38, eight policymakers, 99 from the broader public, and seven none of the above. I don't know who that would be, but seven none of the above. So we did really great after the Monday Community Forum.
So that, this is the new, we did a, we did an online survey earlier and had a very robust response.
Yes.
This is literally to just the last few days.
Absolutely. This number went up over 60, and we're leaving the survey open until the end of the month, December 31st. So everyone, please, you still have time to voice your opinion and get, and get that intake in till the end of the month, it will remain open.
And our communications director has really done a great job of getting it out there, but we can also help to continue to encourage people to go and do that. Okay?
Absolutely.
So any questions?
Quick question.
Yes.
You had mentioned, if they score over an eight, then they're considered, like, they need to be immediately housed. Are those people that score over eight also waiting 91-plus days to be housed currently in our city?
They are. And, and you know what, the, honestly, the higher the score, the higher the need. And sometimes, yes, where that 90-day comes in, that is sometimes where they are waiting that four and five and six months, because these are individuals that may have evictions, that may have felonies. So it is taking us so much longer to house. I will add this with our housing liaison, she has added such a very robust list. She has talked to over 40 new property owners and landlords that are at the table talking to us now that have never have before. So we're really making a lot of headway with that. So we're really pleased.
And I literally attended a Downtowners meeting earlier, and there was a property manager there that's like, I need to talk to her. So.
Send him our way.
So the more we can get that out there, I think we, we realize the challenge and what we're gonna need to address as far as all the things that we know are a gap, a gap in service that have been identified by Homebase. So thank you so much. And in the interest of time, if you all have any feedback for whatever, what you'd like to see every month, you can definitely let me know or email Ms. Evans, and, you know, we'll tweak this as we go.
I, I do want to say this really quick before.
Yep, got 10 minutes.
I'll start Bryant talking. I just want to say this really quick. Last night, as I was out at one of the homeless camps, there is now some eviction notices that are coming up. So we've got potentially 20 to 40 to 50 people out in this area. And if we see the same influx in town, like we saw with the Alameda camp, and we currently don't have people, I just want to make sure that everyone in this room is understanding what's about to happen. And that's all I want to say.
Yes, and that's exactly why Lieutenant.
Great.
Bryant is joining us, because we added that to our already full list to give an update on exactly what is happening.
Absolutely. And I do want to just share too, this is shared on our website every month, and as well as the nightly shelter numbers, all of that is on our website. So if any questions, please feel free to contact us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Da-da-da-da. Lieutenant Bryant.
Okay, as unaccustomed as I am to talking to short periods of time.
Well, so are we.
Yeah.
11 minutes.
11, oh, no, no pressure there. Good evening, council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Lieutenant Carrie Bryant and the Community Outreach Coordinator for the Police Department. Yesterday, as was alluded to, there were notices posted on a piece of private property down on the river that we have had knowledge of, and we have been working with the property owner to reclaim their property. They, it's an area that's south of Lindsay and west of McLean Bank. So it is a piece of private property, private landowner, and they are wishing to reengage in use of that property. And so in order to do that, those that are in that property without permission must, must leave. They've got a lot of cleanup to do, and so they came to us for assistance, which, you know, we've done before. We've done this on different pieces of property, the Nazarene Church behind there, next to Sutton Wilderness, we did. The Mattoon property, we did, we worked with parks and, right, but kind of like a private landowner. And so we use that same procedure for this one. This is a piece of property that, I've been in this position for over four years, and I have been in a lot. I've been down in that property a lot, and so I was aware of where most everything was done in there. So yesterday, we met with the landowners. We, they had their own signs. The language was drafted by them. However, we approved it through the city attorney's office to make sure that it was appropriate for what they were wanting to do. And they posted the signs throughout, we contacted, I spoke personally to 11 different people down there, all of which were known to me or identified themselves as being in a housing plan or working with case management. So they are in the HMIS system as far as I know. And those, those names have been presented to the city homeless coordinator, and hopefully to the COC at large to be prepared for that. The timeline is Tuesday will be the time that they are asked to leave. That's given them six days to be able to leave the property. And that was a timeframe that we worked with the landowner on. My thought on that process is the other piece of property underneath the River Bridge, which is owned by the Department of Transportation, which in and of itself is another issue, that will give us time to meet with them. So we don't have people going back and forth between properties, and we can truly get them hopefully to someplace more permanent than where they're at now. So.
But we don't have the housing.
Well, I understand that, ma'am, but the private landowner does have a right to, to the use of their land. And that's, that's the, that's the direction that we're going. And so on Tuesday, we will be going back into the property, walking the property to make sure that everyone that should be out is out. And if anybody else is there to say, hey, you know, it's time to go, we've gotta go. And then on Wednesday, the landowner will be coming in with equipment to start doing operations on their property. So that's the timeline. We've done, this is the same timeline we did for all these other properties with heavy equipment. So we've done this before, and it, and it has worked. And then the other part of it is, is working with the state, with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation to also go ahead, we're gonna have to have people removed from the area underneath the I-35 bridge. That is a critical infrastructure item, and the state does not want anybody living under, it's a dangerous situation anyway. But there's things going on in there, the state is worried about weakening of structures. And if that, if something happens to that bridge, that's pretty catastrophic for not just Norman, but Oklahoma as a whole. So there'll be a lack of use of the bridge and things such as that. So we really need to get those folks out. The state will, I think it's in their long-range plans to go ahead and put fencing up to make that inaccessible for long-term use. And then for the private piece of property, that's just way too much property to do to fence adequately. So they've got a, a plan similar to what we're doing in Sutton Wilderness, where at Sutton Wilderness, Parks Department patrols out, they go through the trails on four-wheelers just to make sure nobody's in there, and they'll do a similar item with the proper signage posted.
Councilmember Holman.
Okay. Well, I definitely understand the rights of the property owner.
Yes, sir.
That is what it is, I guess. I just want to make sure though, that, you know, our police department's going in there that, and I, I expect this to be the case, but, you know, handle with very sensitive care with these individuals. Are we going in and immediately saying, hey, do you got an ID? I'm gonna run you for warrants? Or, I don't want these folks to be scared of, you know.
Well.
They're gonna, if they.
A lot of them that are in there have talked to me before.
Okay.
So there's already been a, a knowledge of each other. I'm not gonna say a relationship, but a knowledge of each other. And like I said, I've been in this position for four-plus years. This is not the first situation that I've dealt with in this, and I understand, as does the property owner, that we're, what we're dealing with, the gravity of the situation that we're dealing with. But the flip side is, in the four-plus years I've been coming down there, I have used the same word every time when I've talked to the individuals in these encampments, this is untenable. You cannot stay here. This is not a long-term solution. We've got to get you to someplace that is doable. Okay? So we've got a lot of situations in there. This is very complex, very, very personal. And yes, I very much understand, it's very personal. But we, the, we had three lieutenants that were in there yesterday with the property owner. We were talking to people. We were, we were saying, hey, you know, we've told you that this is getting ready to happen, and, and now we're there. So for the most part, they understood that. So with the, with the number of social service agencies and other volunteer groups, hopefully we have, we can find some solutions to where they, they land in a, in a more permanent situation than where they're at now. These, you know, there's no running water, there's no electricity, there may not even be heat. And since August 21st, we've responded to four fire calls and seven smoke investigations. The underbrush is becoming more and more dry, it's very thick, and my fear is that if we get another 40 mile an hour wind day, that it may be crossing Lindsay before we can stop it. So, and that's, that's the fear of the fire department as well. So the, the landowner understands that there's a liability also that they share if they don't do something. So this is, this is what's led us to this.
So one of the things that I was sent, what I believe is the notice that was posted on this private property. And one of the things that at least appeared to me that was missing, and I was curious if you know about this, when we, particularly, I know we discussed this when we were talking about the Mattoon property, there's no contact information. So I mean, how confident are you that you're actually, you know, making contact with the people who are there? And, you know, once you're gone, you know, is there like a enhanced outreach going on? And, you know, are we confident we're actually reaching all these people? And is there a reason that we don't leave a contact number or a contact email or what to do? Or is that just all personally handled and you feel confident that you're actually reaching everybody?
The difference is that the Mattoon property, since Mr. Mattoon deeded that to the city, became a public land.
Okay.
So Michelle Evans, in working with.
Okay.
City Council and with legal, put this language.
Okay.
The language in this, and we gave them, we gave them opportunities, we gave them different sample language to use.
Okay.
They came up with this, and I took that language and then submitted that to city legal to ensure it met the criteria that we needed to enforce if we had to do that.
Okay.
As far as my confidence, Councilmember Hall, you know me, I've been doing this for a long time.
I know.
I, I, I do not want to leave anybody behind. And if I did not think that someone had access, I would bring them down there. And Ms. Evans and I have talked at length, she has the names of all the people that I talked to. If there was anybody that she said, I don't think this person we've talked to before, we would take care of that. But as far as I know, everybody that I've given to her, she's, she knows.
And this is specifically the people that are currently living on private property?
Right. If you, and, and to kind of give you a description, I believe you have a map up there. In fact, if you want to hand me.
Yeah. Just actually.
Hey, he left that, how nice. What's in the red is private property.
Okay.
This orange is, is what was posted.
Okay.
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 So.
So I actually asked you this earlier at the Downtowners meeting. So far, of all the people that you've made contact, because you have done this work for an extended period of time, did you, did you meet anyone that you did not already know?
I had, I had not met them personally, but I had heard their name.
Okay.
So as much as I'd like to say I know everybody in Norman, I, I know there's probably more people that know my name than I know their name.
Well, I guess the better question is, of the people that we have identified in 11 to 15, these are individuals that are known to our continuum of care team.
Correct.
Okay. And so we, we haven't encountered anyone that might be recently new to Norman?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wanna?
I mean, I just, my comments or questions, I guess, were similar to what Councilmember Hall had, I guess. Really just understanding, like, who is here, what is the outreach, what is the plan? I mean, I understand.